Good evening, welcome everybody. I'll go ahead and turn it over to the clerk to get us started tonight.
Hello, my name is Kylie Peckham. I'm with the Lewis County Planning Department, and I want to welcome you to the Planning Commission Public Meeting today. This meeting is taking place in person, streaming live via Zoom and is being recorded. For those joining us via Zoom, please remember to mute your phone or device when you are not speaking. If you forget to mute your phone or device, we will mute for you. The Zoom chat feature is modified, so participants may report technical difficulties directly to myself, the clerk. No public comment or questions will be taken through the chat feature. Tonight's meeting is a workshop on the Public Benefits Rating System and workshop on the Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update.
No problem.
Next, we will do a roll call. The following planning commissioners are present in the room. Commissioners spoken: Russell, Alves, Corbin, Moore, and Scootley. And Commissioner Fritsch is joining us online, so with seven planning commissioners present, we do have a court. We're now ready to begin. Chair Corbin.
Thank you. My name is Frank Corbin, and I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission Meeting of February 11th, 2025. Prior to tonight, the Planning Commission received the agenda for today, and the agenda is displayed on the screen. I would entertain a motion and a second from the Planning Commissioners to approve the agenda as presented. Thank you, Roger. Is there a second?
One second.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? If not, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Also, prior to tonight, the Commission received the meeting notes from the January 28th, 2025 meeting. Are there any corrections to the meeting notes? Anybody? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion and a second from the Planning Commissioners to adopt the minutes.
I beg the motion.
Second.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Lori. Been moved and seconded to approve the meeting notes of January 28th, 2025. All in favor, please signify by... Oh, any discussion? All right, no discussion? All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. Okay, next is public comment. Kylie, has anyone signed up to comment, or are there any hands raised in Zoom?
There is nobody present in the room. Is anybody on Zoom here to provide comment?
Okay, thank you. I want to welcome everybody that's on Zoom. Thank you for joining the Planning Commission Meeting. This is your time, if you wanted to make any public comments on any agenda item. Okay, all right, seeing none. Tonight's workshop item is the Public Benefits Rating System. The purpose of a work session is for staff to present information about the topic and for the commissioners to ask questions. No public comments on the proposal will be taken during the workshop, so I will now turn it over to the county assessor. Mr. Ross Nielsen, welcome to the meeting tonight. It's great to have you. Also, welcome our new staff member. Sorry, I should have been prepared. Kylie, thank you. Kylie, from formerly of Security State Bank, Timberland Bank in Toledo. So, welcome. Mr. Nielsen?
Okay, Ross Nielsen, Lewis County Assessor. I don't know how familiar everyone here is with this program, but I just want to give kind of a quick once-over, and then if you guys have questions, or if I'm taking too long, just stop me, because I tend to keep going. So, the Public Benefits Rating System is set up, and it's set up by the state, and it's set up in RCW 8434 that allows property owners to have their open space farm and agricultural land and forest land valued at a current use value rather than their highest and best use. So, the way this works is, if you have designated forest land, if you have over five acres of forest and you're actively growing commercial timber, you can apply to be in the program, and you can have a fairly dramatic reduction in your taxes on a yearly basis, knowing that at the end of, with timber, forty years or whatever it is, your harvest date, you're going to pay a large excise tax. So, that's kind of the way it's set up. Agriculture... So, with forest, we drop the whole value, so the value of the land, you'll have ten acres, it's worth $5,000, is all you're being taxed on. When you have an agricultural program, when you're in agriculture, you actually will pay... We will have a market value on the land, which is that highest and best use. What would this five acres sell for now? And then you'll have that reduced value similar to the forest, based on the fact that you're doing something with your land commercially, whether it's just haying or housing cattle, whatever that is. Then there's also a program that's open space. Open space is... One of the things that the state is trying to do is trying to have... Keep land that is not being used in the city or for housing, and to have that to try and promote as a public benefit, having areas that are not being farmed or being turned into housing or anything like that. So, that's kind of how this program goes. And the way... There are a couple types of this land putting in open space. There's what we call farm conservation land, and this should be in the packet of information you have. But there's farm conservation land, and what that's for is land that was previously commercial farmland. So, they used to use it commercially, and they want to take it out of that and no longer have the income requirements, because in order for it to be in farm and ag, it has to have actual income. So, you can take it out of that and have it reclassified as farm conservation, which means we're no longer going to be using it that way, but we promise not to do anything commercial with it or turn it into house, whatever that is. The other type that we have is open space. We call it open space, open space. It's OSOS. And what that is, is kind of the same thing. It wasn't in farmland, but it's someone that's agreeing to turn this into a public benefiting area that they are going to do nothing with it. So, you're not haying it, you're not mowing it, you're going to leave this in its natural state. Often, people are doing it when they have wetlands or something like that, and they want to maintain that area as wetlands, or they have... Like I said, they're turning it in, they want to have it be protected where there's going to be no one building there. So, kind of a lot of reasons, but the open space land is... It's zoned for open space. So, there's a whole bunch of requirements that you have to hit with this. One of the things that has to happen is the Public Benefits Rating System that we had, that we met and talked about, the two properties we're dealing with. One of the properties was, is farm conservation land, so it was formerly used as farm conservation. And then the other property that we had was applied to be an open space, open space. I didn't print out the information that Mindy had emailed with the questions, and then also included in that was this checklist that I'm assuming you guys all have. So, the way this works is... And with the first one, we sent this qualifying criteria and scoring sheet. So, we'll go back to the Public Benefits Rating System that is actually set up by the county commissioners. So, it's overseen by the commissioners and by you guys. So, that's kind of how this works, and so what we do is we have a meeting, and we have the PBRS members come. They discuss the property. They look at information. I believe Preston had done a review through the community development to see what would qualify, and then they go through the checklist and check off the boxes to see if there is enough public benefit for us to determine that this land can go into it. We had two parcels that we looked at. So, your packet of information that I handed out, I'll explain, go through real quick what we have here, and I think this is the info sheet.
Okay, so I took the folder and then I... The top one, so info packet?
Yeah. Okay, that's kind of the... Yeah, that should be the first page of this. And then if you scroll down to the third page... So, I just want to tell you, go over real quick what's in the packet. What these are, this is, these are a generic information sheet for these parcels. So, the first parcel does have a house on it. They're not putting the portion that the house is sitting on, asking to put that in the program, but when we print up our information sheet, it comes with all of it. So, you have Page 1 is the basics on the house. If you look at Page 2, it's going to have pictures of buildings, and then pictures of the... I think the picture on Henriot Road is wrong. It's on that corner, but it has a picture of the land, picture of any of the buildings that were involved there, and then the last pictures of the power. Then, the next... Keep scrolling down, and if you get, there's a page that looks like this. This is the one I really want you to see. And this is information that the PBRS had in front of them at the time. So, looking at this parcel, this is the overhead map of it. There's a key down at the bottom that explains the areas that are wetlands, all of that good stuff. So, the PBRS went over all of that. So, that's the first parcel. Then the second parcel is the next page, and there's a picture of it. On Brim Road, there's a picture of the actual site. There's the basics of the land, and then scroll down to the next page, and you're going to see another map. So, you guys have all of the basic information that the PBRS members had. Then what they do is they sit down with that checklist that you guys have in your packet, and they gave the PBRS points awarded. They have to have, meet three of the criteria to be able to be in the program. And you'll see that the Lund parcel, which is the 02817700000, received four points from each of the members of the PBRS. And you'll see that Garmin, which is parcel 0113, 9 is 0004000, did not meet the requirements of the three. So, you know, when you go from the farm and agricultural designation to this designation, they are going to pay more taxes. So, the value is going to be higher than it was in the farm and ag program, but it will be lower than the typical taxable for that area. So, there's kind of, it's kind of a middle ground. So, but the one that did qualify is going from farm conservation land or qualifies to go from farm conservation land to this open space farmland. The other one that did not qualify was the one that was applied to be in straight open space, open space. But that's kind of the basics of it, is that this program was put in place. The state has us do it that way. Not all the counties do it. They're supposed to set up a PBRS and do all that, but a lot of the counties, like we only get one every couple years. That we have two this year is kind of interesting. But the two applications... So, we try to give people a heads-up in our office when people come in and ask about being put in any of the programs. We try to give it a kind of a once-over, give it a look. For example, if they want to go into a forest program, but the whole place is swamp and trees aren't going to grow there, we try to let them know before they spend the money to apply. We try to let them know that, hey, this doesn't look like it might, you know, be good. You might talk to a forester first, or another farmer, or whatever. So, we try to do that. We did try to give a heads-up to the one that did not qualify. We let them know it didn't look like it... You know, we said the chance of you qualifying is fairly low, and you might talk to some people, but they applied anyways. So, just wanted you to have a heads-up on that, that we try to... We try not to have people spend money when it's not going to do anything. So, are there any questions?
Thank you, Ross. Commissioners, I think what I'll do is, what we typically do is I'll call on you one at a time, and so that everybody gets a shot, and I'll do it at random. Let me start with Gretchen on the phone. Gretchen, are you... Do you have any questions?
Oh, well, I guess I don't have the packets that you guys have, but I'm curious if we're able to know what it was about that second property that didn't allow them to make the reclassification?
The email that Mindy sent has the qualifying criteria and scoring sheet, and I don't have the information. In fact, I don't think we keep that, because it's up to the PBRS to fill that out. It's something, just so you guys know, that my involvement with this is basically hosting the PBRS meeting, but I don't have a say in it at all. I just introduce everyone and sometimes give water bottles. But the... So, just like now, I'm making a presentation, but the person who's in charge of this program in my office is actually out today. So, I would normally have Alex here explaining, but I was there in that meeting, but I don't sit and critique. I don't sit and try to explain things unless they ask me specific questions. It was the members of the PBRS that did decide whether or not these qualify.
If I can just jump in. Gretchen, on Monday, we sent a staff memo to everybody that responded to Frank's questions that he sent the previous week, and an attachment to that, which was included with the PDF, has the criteria that Ross was just talking about that are used to make that. And then the previous memo that was sent a couple weeks back, that was the original staff memo, had the scoring sheet that had each of the scores that the committee members had put on the properties. So, in combo, those are kind of layout how the committee made their decisions about what qualifies and what doesn't.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I missed that first one. I was just looking at the one that's available today, and it was just a blank score sheet, but I can go back and look at that. Thank you.
It is a blank score sheet. The... Where we have the... How they graded these is literally a piece of paper that just has each member of the PBRS and how many points they scored. So, we actually don't have a copy of that actual score sheet, which boxes they checked. It just says Lund. For the Lund property, and I can't pronounce the name, Kovaroff, had four, Myers four, Preston, Pinkston four, Greg Lund four. So, but like I said, that worksheet is what they specifically used for scoring.
Thank you. All right. Jeff, do you have any questions? Microphone, please. Sorry. I can call on somebody else if you like.
No, 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 no. I've got a bunch of questions. Thanks for coming, by the way. This is very interesting.
Oh, anytime. Anytime you guys have questions, please let me know.
Is there a land size that we're talking about with these parcels?
It should be. It's listed on this paperwork. Yeah.
Is there... Are there minimums?
There are minimums. I believe it's actually one acre that you can put in, in the bare minimum, and please don't quote me on that. Alex knows better, that you can put in, but it's dwindling returns the smaller property you put in. I know that with forest, it's five acres. With agriculture, it's one acre. And then with the open space, I believe it's the one acre. And the way it will be valued, if they get in the program, is it's going to be a percentage of their tax, of their market value. So, for example, if they get a 30% reduction, then they're going to pay 70% of the tax on the property. Whereas in the ag program or in forest, it's a substantial reduction that's based on soil types and stuff like that, so it's much lower.
So, what zoning are we talking about?
That also should be listed on the paperwork, but that's something that they did go over as the PBRS, one of the things that they look at.
Right. What zoning is required?
It has to be something compatible with it. I believe it says in the Good Evening Commissioners one, if, I don't know if it's up there, right on your first page. Let's see. It varies. It doesn't... I know that I have seen open space, and a lot of times, they have allowed uses. Like, for example, if you have RDD 20, that isn't limited to doing one house. You can have it in program that way. Actually, we have places that are in the forest program that are in city limits. Naperville has a pretty big section of their city that is forested, and someone owns a whole bunch of that property, and they have enough property to add up to the five acres that it needs to put in program, and they have done that.
I'd like to just add that the first email that we sent you had a handout attached to it that provides answers to the questions about what qualifies for this, what zoning, what uses are allowed. All of those basic questions were provided in that handout that you received. That's called the Open Space Taxation Act Summary. And again, that was emailed to you, which day? We can pull it up, but I mean, we just don't have time to read through the whole thing right now. That's why we provided it ahead.
The verbiage on here is land is zoned for open space or identified as a natural resource area by Comprehensive Official Land Use Plan adopted by the county or city. So, it's whatever is compatible. If it was zone commercial, maybe not. I don't know. I would have to look at the regulations.
And what do you consider forest?
So, designated forest is, has to be... Has to be... What? Yeah. The designated forest is a program that you apply for through the state that we administer, and there are specific things you have to do. This has to be commercially viable timber that is meant to be grown. The amount that you have to have on there varies by the age of it. You know, there's... And again, you have to have a forest plan.
Who makes that determination?
The state tells us what they need to have, you know, what, how many trees per acre? Is that what you're asking, or are you asking who checks on it?
I'm being very selfish here.
No, that's fine.
My wife and I own about thirty acres outside of Winlock, up on the hill there. And it... Yeah. It's been all sorts of things over time, you know, agriculture. It's got a barn, old barn, and it's got trees on it, about eight acres of trees that are standing. Old Christmas tree farm, I guess. You know, we had the DNR out just this last Wednesday. Very helpful, very nice, very informative. And we have to thin it out, of course, because it's a fire hazard. It was a fire resiliency program that we asked her out for, and she came up from Longview.
Was that Kathy?
No, it was... Oh, rats, now you ask me.
Sorry about that.
No, it wasn't. A new person down there, fairly new. But we have about eight acres of this, what-do-you-do-with-it sort of forest, overgrown mess that can burn any day. And I'm sure lots and lots of people have the same sort of situation.
So, I want to jump in just for a second. I think if we want to explore what can qualify and look at other parcels, we can absolutely do that, but I don't know that we should use the commission's time. What we're trying to do here is review what was provided by the PBRS committee and ask questions about that so that we can feel comfortable with it moving forward to the Board of County Commissioners for adoption.
And I would invite you to come to my office.
Are we voting on this tonight?
You don't actually have to take a vote on this. This is informational, making sure you get to ask questions. You're on this particular thing because they're not, this isn't your jurisdiction.
We just don't have time to answer them. Is that the deal?
I just don't think that we should spend time exploring other pieces of property. We're supposed to be focused on the properties that have been brought forward tonight.
Okay. Roger?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Lori? No? Jason?
Yeah, I don't have anything to add.
Okay. Bob?
Yeah, I probably have too much, since I probably did the first one in Lewis County in 2009, and it got me into thousands of dollars of trouble that was not required, so I'm not going to get into that. I will correct one thing you said, and it was what caused me the problem in the past. And I was told by the assessor's office, just what you said, that something is wetland, so therefore it needs to be an open space, because you can't log it. I, three years later, had a forester out there, the Washington State Extension Forester, who clearly defined 190 trees an acre as timber, and he doesn't care whether it's wetland or not. He stated to me, "Mr. Russell, you didn't create the laws which create those setbacks, so therefore it's timber." I thought this was the worst program ever. I'm amazed that people get into this. There's only been, in my four years on this committee, one, it was on Alaska, and that had a reason for it. This program has a reason in downtown Seattle. But both these people, I would advise them different. I think they're doing the wrong thing, but we won't get into that, because you asked me what you could do, and what you would do with this farmland is rip it and plant it and write a forest management plan and have zero taxes. So, I don't know why this guy's going from forest to open space. That is... But these people do it.
But he's not here to answer that, and they are the ones who apply. Yeah.
Let me clarify that when I was saying, when I was mentioning the wetlands, I'm talking about if someone had wetlands that trees won't grow. We don't look at...
It doesn't exist.
But I'm just saying, we have people come in and say... Again, I would welcome you to come talk to me in my office. I would love to talk to you about it, because I want to look at everything. There are nuances to everything in my office. Every week, I come up with something I've never heard before, and I've been in that office 10 years. But I would welcome you to come talk to me, because there may be some sort of tweak we need to do to a program or to how we're managing a program. I would be glad to talk about it. But with these ones, they applied. The PBRS made a comment, or, you know, made their determination. And again, I wasn't involved with whether or not they get approved. I was hosting, so...
Thank you, Mr. Nielsen. I think we have a question from Gretchen. Thank you, Mr. Nielsen. I think we have a question from Gretchen. We'll go back around another time just to make sure everybody's got their questions answered. Gretchen, go ahead.
Yeah, that's mostly for Mindy. I, I'm remembering that, that was at Carlisle Lake that we heard about before on this committee. And I, I feel like I remember voting on that. Is that, was that something entirely different? Were they trying to rezone or?
Yeah, so I am, I just was pulling up the notes to make sure that I was right, that there isn't any voting that takes place on this. The last time we did this was in 2022. It's been a minute since anybody's applied for the program. So I'm just going through.
Well, in the whereas, can I answer?
Yeah, please do.
In the whereas, it says, the Lu, says whereas the Lewis County Planning Commission held a public hearing on February 22, 2022, where the PC considered testimony and voted to approve transmittal of a recommendation. Now, that might actually supposed to have said the PBRs. I don't know if it's...
I believe, yeah, I believe it's PBRs because we did not take a vote last time on this. This was an informational thing to the planning commission so that you were aware of this coming forward. Yeah, I'm not sure. I can go back and pull the, the materials from that one to see what we sent out, but I'm looking back at the notes. Yeah, at the notes that whenever there's a motion and vote taken, the notes, the notes reflect that, and there was no motion or vote taken in 2022.
Okay, thank you, Gretchen. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Nielsen, for joining us tonight.
No problem. Did you want me to answer the questions that you had, or was that, did that suffice in writing?
I think it's, it's okay in writing. The only thing that, you know, that I'll say, you know, that I object to is really, it's a legislature thing. It's not, you know, it's not anything else. But, you know, I really object to the fact that, you know, using myself as an example, if I were to enter into this program or apply for this program, get approved, and then seven years and one day later, I die and my kids end up with my estate, and they who live out of state have to sell the, the place, then they get stuck with seven years of my back taxes, and I don't like that. It's, to me, another inheritance tax, you know, but that's, that's another issue for another day, so.
Recognize. Well, I just wanted to say that I disagree with that.
Okay.
Wholeheartedly. The seven years back taxes, if you take advantage of that and then you die, then your estate still owes it as far as I'm concerned, but just wanted to...
Only, only if they take it out of the program. If they leave it in the program, broke three years, they're fine.
Yeah, yeah. His mic was off, so it doesn't count. All right. Thanks again, Ross.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Again, I welcome any questions that people might have. And, and sometime, I know that a lot of times when you come in my office, most people don't come in, you know, hey, good job. I can, you know, I'm, I'm willing to talk about hard things and, and also willing to look at how we're doing things.
Ross, you're, you're very brave to show up here.
Oh, this is not bad at all. No one's thrown anything yet, so.
No, Ross, you're doing a great job, and thank you.
Thank you.
I've seen you under a lot of enemy fire at, at times, and, you know, you've, you've held yourself very well, so.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
All right. Okay, moving on. Workshop on the Comprehensive Plan. Tonight's second workshop is the Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update. Again, the purpose of a workshop is for staff to present the topic and commissioners to ask questions of the staff. No public comment will be taken. There will be hearings on the Comprehensive Plan this spring when the public can provide testimony. Now, I turn it over to Kim Lee Horn.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me. Can everyone hear me? Just wanted to double check. Great. Thank you so much. My name is Erin O'Kelly. I am a long-range planner working for Kim Lee Horn. Kim Lee Horn is completing the periodic update for Lewis County for the Comprehensive Plan. Let me take a moment and get my screen shared and ready to go. Sorry, Megan, how do I do the screen share again?
Um, I think you co-host, so there should be a green share button.
Oh, right there. Is everyone seeing the presentation slide? Double checking. Got it? Okay, I see it on the screen. All right. All right. Thank you all for having us again here today. This is our third meeting. This is our third briefing on the Lewis County Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update. Tonight, we will be getting, getting into the land use updates, rural elements, the housing elements, and we'll briefly talk about the environment element as well. We're really just focusing these meetings on the high-level changes that are coming down the pipeline as we've been reviewing the policies this past year, making sure they're consistent with the updates. So again, these are kind of high-level summaries because we're going to hand over the document to you guys to start digging in. We're just doing introductions into each element because there's quite a lot of content and trying to start the conversations with you guys as we keep moving forward through this process for the next few months. So again, today, the goal of this is to really just like, present you with the big changes coming that we've assessed and then get initial feedback, initial thoughts and questions that pop up into your head, and then have you kind of take the document when we give you the draft and come back and have a more productive conversation in March. So again, we're keeping this process moving forward. This is, as I said before, our third briefing. We will be moving into a couple workshops on the On Alaska Subarea Plan and Packwood Subarea Plan in the next few meetings. So a little less focus on the Comprehensive Plan. These are three separate documents. So the first three meetings were on one document, and then the next couple will be on the Subarea Plan, On Alaska and Packwood. And actually, this, I apologize, this slide should be revised, I think, just slightly. I think on the March 11th meeting, there will be opportunity to ask questions about the draft document that we'll be sending out. Again, this particular meeting is just focusing on the changes to adjust the Comprehensive Plan. The Comprehensive Plan is one document in a long series of documents that helps that Lewis County has to use under the Growth Management Act in order to administer land use regulations. And so, again, the goals and policies in the comp plan are meant to pave the way into what would go into the development regulations, and those are supposed to be in alignment. So we're going to propose or show you and discuss some, you know, high-level changes to the land use policies. And again, you can think about that as that will translate into the development regulations later on in a few months when we start having those conversations. So we pave the way first of like the overall vision of the goals and where they're going, what kind of land use stuff, visions we need to keep in mind in the long term. And then it gets trickled all the way down into the actual development regulations. So as I'm presenting these policies again, I think I presented this at the last meeting, but I just want to keep everyone updated and remind everyone, there's a, there's a couple key things we look at when we look at existing changes, policy changes. So we look in the current document, and we first have to automatically look at the policy and say, is it still meeting the state requirements since the last periodic update? Which I, at the first meeting in January, we did a high-level summary of kind of the laundry list of state laws that we have to then compare each, each existing policy against. And just so everyone remembers, the gap analysis during that state law review, the, really the largest gaps were the new housing requirements, breaking housing up by income and addressing housing in a, in a variety of ways, not only planning for the housing, but how you're going to accommodate different housing types by income level. Those are some specific state requirements. And then obviously, we talked at this about, the last meeting is the requirement of the new climate element and state requirements. And just in enhancement and climate and resiliency planning altogether and the whole Comprehensive Plan is just a large requirement during the periodic update, state law review. We also have to make sure, again, all the current policies are in alignment with the countywide planning policies. And then all last year, we did a series of community engagement opportunities that I did present, some high-level summaries at the very first meeting. You can go on the public website and kind of see the engagement that we did. But then we go look at all of the policies again and say, is this alignment? What we heard from the community, are these priorities, are these policies prioritizing what we heard in those reports? And then the county vision, and this is really, we work, we work with the different departments of the county. We ask the board and we ask the planning commission and the staff, and we look at all adopted plans and make sure these are all in alignment. And then administrative cleanup. So just keeping in mind that we're trying to make these policies efficient, easy to use, easy to understand and clear. And if we go back, maybe the policy was written 10 years ago. We go back and look, but we can't understand how it's being implemented. We will try and tweak and revise and like, try and make sure it's, it's very clear what that policy is doing. So I do want to emphasize, when we give the document over to you and you are looking at some policies and you're like, I don't know what this is, what was, what is this intended to do? It would be really great to, you know, flag those and make sure, and then we, we would need to really make sure that they're very clearly understood. So this is just a big part of what we did as part of the revisions that you'll get. Another discussion that we're going to have tonight, too, is just walking through the land use changes that we are proposing for this periodic, this Comprehensive Plan periodic update. So during the periodic update, it is required under the Growth Management Act that we assess housing and employment and population growth. We are required to, you know, revise and review urban growth areas and make sure that they are still providing adequate capacity. If they have, if they don't have enough capacity, you know, cities need to reassess and understand and re-study how we need to accommodate the capacity. But then the periodic update is also an opportunity to understand how we need to use our land use to get the things in the community that we want. How is our land use contributing to housing, jobs, preservation of rural lands? How is our land use contributing to recreation in the area? How's it contributing to transportation? And make any adjustments to the land use based on that. So the, the land use proposals that we're including in this periodic update, there's really only four or five, like, key land use changes that are being done. And if I'm starting up north of the county, up by Centralia, you'll see we're making some changes to the IPAT UGA and Centralia's UGA. And then if you're going further south of Centralia along I-5, we're making some changes to the freeway land uses, freeway for corridors. Toledo's urban reserve area is being updated, modified a little bit. And then the other larger change is the Packwood urban growth area as well. And then I do want to specifically call out, sorry, at the beginning of this slide, I mentioned that we have to review the urban growth areas and really modify and make sure they're adequately accommodating growth. So these are really the three urban growth areas that we're talking about. Obviously, Packwood introducing a new urban growth area and then, or swapping. And then Centralia is actually reducing its urban growth area. They, they have enough capacity to accommodate the growth without utilizing this land, and so they're going to be removing it from their urban growth area. And then the IPAT urban growth area is also getting some modifications. Some of that land is going back to the natural forest land, right, land use right next to it. Mindy, did you want to add any other details?
Not specifically related to UGA, I guess. The only other detail I would add is we are not making any changes to resource lands except at IPAT, where we're adding land back into the forest resource land. And we're not making any changes to the rural lands except for at the freeway commercials. So each of the interchanges, we're expanding the freeway commercial zone. This is a direct result of the community asking for us to focus larger-scale commercial development near I-5 in the interchanges. So those are some expansions. But other than that, there's actually precious few changes to the land use designations this time around.
Does anyone have any questions about the land use changes?
Oh, I should say, next, so the next meeting, February 25th, we're going to get into Packwood deeply. So there, we don't need to cover a lot of that right now. We'll be going real deep into Packwood. So we can kind of set that one aside until next time and focus on the other questions, if you have any.
Okay, great. I'm going to go around opposite order, so Bob, you get to go first.
Yeah. My question is on that Centralia UGA that they, that they pulled back in. You know, my experience here is UGAs happen when somebody wants their land brought into the UGA. So I assume we talked about that one. I don't know. Maybe you'll tell me. What's going on up there that the city is able to pull it back in? And can cities do that anywhere in Lewis County?
So what's happening there is we are taking that area out of the urban growth area and returning it just to the county. And that usually happens, as Erin said, when a city has determined that they have sufficient capacity within their city limits and the remainder of the UGA. So their UGA is oversized. And so that's the first reason that you would pull an area out of an urban growth area. The second reason is for not being able to provide service to that. So a lot of our UGAs were drawn 25, 30 years ago. And through, you know, further assessment, realizing that some spaces are simply really difficult to serve with water or sewer, and they're not going to get there in the next 20 years. And if an area isn't going to have water or sewer in the next 20 years, it shouldn't be in the UGA. 20 years from now, we can reassess that. So Centralia's done all of these assessments. They did their land capacity analysis. They've done the work with their capital facilities in the space that we have identified as one that they do not need in the urban growth area for the next 20 years.
Jason?
I don't really have anything, but just to kind of piggyback off that. So that's, that's most likely land that somebody had wanted to develop at one point. They applied for the UGA. It never happened. And so in these particular instances, that developer's not... Like, I mean, I know that the developers don't apply. It's the city that applies on their behalf. But do they usually come to some sort of agreement when they're pulling back? Or does the city just do it if there's a certain amount of time elapsed? Or is there potential for somebody to purchase land? The city gets it in the UGA. They think they're going to develop it in a couple years, and then the rug kind of gets pulled out from under them. Is that a, is that a possibility?
Yeah, so the UGA is the county's jurisdiction, right? So it's our decision about making the changes there. But Centralia's been doing a lot of work, and it has been very public, the, the conversations around it. So as you know, if somebody had property where it either was being proposed to come in or go out of the UGA and they didn't want that, y'all will hear about that. That will not be quiet. And so, you know, that kind of information always comes forward during testimony, if that's the case. But, you know, Centralia and the county feel pretty confident in this decision for this space here. There were some other spaces that we looked at as well and then backed off of for various reasons. So, yeah, there's been some due diligence ahead of time.
So typically, you're not going to get into a, a PR war with somebody who's trying to develop something that they thought they'd be able to develop? I mean, that's typically the stance I would, I would assume.
I'm assuming that you guys likely would not recommend we remove property from a UGA if they want to do so. And, and that is, it's your decision. You guys are making that recommendation, not us. So this is what staff is presenting to you, and you'll be making the recommendation to the board, so.
I'm just curious how that works, maybe anything. I mean, I, I assume that there's not an issue if they're pulling it back, so.
No, it's much easier to take area out of an urban growth area. It's very challenging to expand an urban growth area. There are new rules that allow you to swap to acknowledge development pressures. So like, another, we're not doing that here, but let's say in five years when we have a new OFM population that comes in and, and maybe one of the other cities says, we're not going to develop here, but we want to develop here. population that comes in and, and maybe one of the other cities says, we're not going to develop here, but we want to develop here and they swap. There's some rules around that that make it easier, but an expansion is where it gets really tough. But pulling back is pretty easy. It's a pretty low bar to demonstrate can't be served, not needed.
Lori?
Are you familiar with the bill that's kind of going through right now where they're proposing that any partial that touches it, current UGA will be automatically in the UGA?
Yeah, that's unlikely to go get through legislature. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It has full opposition from WASAC, the city's future wise. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. It makes planning at the city level or at the county level impossible.
I wondered what your stance would be.
Yeah, it makes it impossible to just automatically pull those in without proper land capacity, determination of services and so forth. So yeah, it's, it's not a
Well, it would have been very impactful to Morton because all the property around the UGA in Morton is like, you know, pretty steep. So I was wondering what you would say about that, but thanks.
It has, it has a lot of opposition. So I don't think that one's going to make it through.
Roger?
Do we, or as a commission, do, do we have anything to do with ILAs or does that affect us in anything that we do?
The ILAs will not come back to you. Those are decided by city council and board of county commissioners without the planning commission's involvement directly. However, I am very happy to give you guys updates on that conversation. And where we're headed with things and so forth. Happy to keep you guys informed about it. And then I would also just invite you, if you want to come to the planned growth committee meetings, that's really where we hashed the deets out on things. And those are open to the public. They're noticed meetings. But yeah, if you want, if you want updates, I can, I can give those.
Sorry, ILA?
Interlocal agreements. So we have interlocals with Centralia, Chehalis right now where we co-manage the urban growth area and we're renegotiating those. And we are also working on entering into a separate interlocal around annexation for Centralia, Chehalis, maybe Morton, maybe some of the others. To get the cities back in an annexation mode because really the UGA should get annexed and that hasn't been happening. So there's a lot of conversations going on through that planned growth committee on the details around that.
Yeah. Currently we were looking at a piece of property that in Centralia and they're like, well, currently it's light industrial, but once the ILA is expired or whatever the process is happening, it's going to revert back to residential.
And we won't, yeah, we're not going to do that. So the conver, the last conversation we had at planned growth committee would be the remainder of the UGA that doesn't get annexed. We would likely simply adopt by reference the city's zoning designations and development regulations. And that's predicated on the cities aggressively annexing a lot of their land. So not much is left. So, but this is, as I've been telling people in the planned growth committee who come to that, we're opening the sausage making. So it is a conversation. There are no decisions that have been made and it will be a conversation for the next six months. So happy to keep you guys kind of updated, but also really happy for people to attend. If you can't attend, I get it. Just shoot me an email to say, hey, send me the notes and I'll send you the meeting notes from those meetings. Yeah.
I've been to some of those meetings. Did you have anything else, Roger?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, Jeff?
No questions.
Okay, Gretchen?
Not right now. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. And I have no questions. Okay. One more shot. Does anybody have any questions? Erin?
Me?
Yeah.
Sorry. Oh, yeah.
Were you trying to say something?
Oh, I can move into my next slide if we want. I just wanted to pause at this point. Just if we didn't want to discuss, but.
Does, yeah, Erin, sorry, just really quick. Does anybody have any questions about the TransAlta changes that are going on up there? We haven't really dove into those. It will be all in the information that comes to you guys next week. So you're certainly free to ask questions there, but it's not something we've talked about very much. So I'm not, I'm just not sure if anybody is interested.
TransAlta is not going to come to us for anything?
Yeah, yes.
It will?
Yeah.
Okay, yes. Yeah, we should have an update then.
Yeah. So we're making, TransAlta IPAT is an urban growth area. It is one of the county only urban growth areas, has no city in it. It is an industrial urban growth area. So I think I've explained before, urban growth areas, there's different flavors. They're not all the same. And there are industrially, industrial only urban growth areas. It exists there. We're tweaking it based on our work with TransAlta as they transition out of coal and move into whatever comes next, right? So something will be next up there. Not quite sure what yet. But we've been working really closely with them to redefine the boundaries of that UGA. So it's focused just on the area that once some places are reclaimed, they're going to go back to forest. They're not going to be reclaimed to, you know, an industrial use. And so those spaces were, were taken out of that industrial UGA and putting them into that forest designation, recognizing that they're not going to do anything but be forest. And then redefining the spaces where we think future industrial development is possible and likely, and we'd like to encourage it. So that's how that's getting redefined. And then you guys will be seeing in step two of this, not now, but step two, you're going to be seeing an entirely new code section around energy. Cause we don't have code section now around energy, which means that when new energy producers want to come in, we don't have a process for them. And that's not good. We want to have a process for them. We don't want to force them to the state every single time. So step two of your work, after we get through the comp plan, you're going to be seeing a whole new code section for that work. So there's a lot going on internally for that space.
So are we trying to pattern that after somewhere else?
We always pattern everything we do. The first step in code writing is find somebody else's code you like and take it.
So have you found, have you found some?
Oh, we're using a few. Do, who, who are the jurisdictions we're looking at? Do you remember, Gillian? I mean, we're looking at Jefferson, Yakima. Who else did we look at? Yeah, we've looked at a few, mostly ones that are doing a lot of energy production now. Yeah. So the Spokane, yes, some of the ones that are currently our biggest energy producers in the state is where we're looking to take lead from. Yeah.
And so I'm curious if we're using those codes, how much of that would you say that you guys like of those codes? I mean, are they doing?
We only take the codes we like.
No, I know, but I'm just curious. Is it, I mean, is there, is there a lot of it?
Yeah.
That is, has been really productive?
Yeah. I mean, just looking through like Jefferson County's codes, we're like, God, this is fantastic. I wish this was our code right now. So.
And that we can kind of Lewis County it.
We do. That's what we do. Yeah.
Way, not in a
That's what we do. We pull it in and then we, we give it the Lewis County touch. Yeah.
Their concerns usually are like sec, safety, you know, like, oh no, you can do it here, but you, you need to make your shore some distance from any housing. They are not very regulating a lot of stuff, you know, it's, they are, yeah, they are not very complicated codes. They are very simple, like the high of the, the stuff that, that you can see through it and not change the landscaping, you know?
Yeah. The intention is we want these facilities and we want TransAlta to be functioning. And you know, it's coming out of coal, but we don't want it to stop functioning. So the whole goal is to create a code package in the next step that makes that easy without having to go to the state. So just a little preview, but for now, what you're going to really see is the map changes. And then as Erin said last time, if you look in the economic development goals and policies, you'll see some stuff that's kind of angling us towards that focus on energy in that space.
I said one other kind of curious thing. So when we annexed, or when we take that UGA, especially that industrial stuff and we, we turn it back into forest land, TransAlta still owns that forest land. But what, what, are there any forestry management requirements that they're put under to manage? If it's a lar, I mean, I'm assuming that's a large amount. How much acreage are we talking about? Yeah. I mean, it looks, it looks big.
It's big.
And so typically if that was state land, it would presumably be managed. But if you have that large of an area that's privately owned, do they?
It's their reclamation plan. So all mining has reclamation that they, so their reclamation plan lays a lot of that out for them. So I mean, we, if you want to get into that, we can certainly have them share some more information about what the plans are with those going forward.
I'm just curious if that's something that gets negotiated out or?
It usually gets negotiated out when the mining operation begins. Right? So it's like, yes, you may dig up the ground and here's what you have to do after. And the after is usually 50 years later.
Right.
So, yeah.
And then, so everything's changed.
The whole topography out there has changed.
The, the whole world has changed in 50 years and what the expectation is.
But yeah, if you guys, you know, want to know more about that, happy to pull the information. They've got great information that they've shared and we can, we can give you more in writing and then, you know, hone our discussion.
That'd be great. I think there's interest in that. Okay. Any other questions before I turn it back over to Erin? Okay, Erin, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah. So just to, this is all the, all we wanted to highlight about the land use map changes. But I do want to emphasize that the changes, you know, are very minimal. And then the reasoning is just trying to align with the county's vision, which is economic development opportunities, trying to set the county up for economic development in the future and growing in that regard. And then, and that's with the freeway corridor changes and land use and then the, you know, the IPAT UGA. And then the additional land use changes are really for housing accommodation and opportunities around UGAs and urban services. Again, during the engagement, we still were getting, we still get tons of engagement quite a bit about housing and providing more housing opportunities for people. And then that also is consistent with, you know, the new state requirements for provisions of housing as well. So those are the main land use changes. Otherwise, we, we didn't want to change, you know, anything that was going to, you know, natural resource lands. No, don't want to touch agricultural areas. No, we want to preserve our agricultural lands and areas and stuff like that. So just to kind of go back to the bigger picture, trying to align with the whole communities and the county's vision. These were the, the land use changes that resulted from that process. So now I will move into the high level summaries of the policy changes for the elements we haven't covered yet. And so the first one is going to be the land use element. The land use element does also include in, in Lewis County's comprehensive land, like the natural environment. And there's one other section I'm forgetting. I think the rural element is in the land use element as well. But right now the, the existing topics in the first half of the land use section are around the urban growth areas. And then the policies for development informs around urban growth areas, commercial land. And then there were already policies in Lewis County's comp plan about master planned resorts and industrial developments. And then the original urban growth area policies were just kind of blanket for all urban growth areas. So, and that would be urban growth areas that have cities and urban growth areas that do not, like on Alaska and Packwood. So that leads into really the main changes that we've done for the urban growth area policies. So the urban growth area policies we updated to help with administration that the county is currently working on. And so discussing boundary changes and how's the kind of, how's the county going to look at boundary changes or assess these processes over time? So there were some revisions to policies to help with the, that administration. And that was really just, you know, largely trying to incorporate the county's future vision of administering growth areas. And then the main change also is this kind of small town UGA concept. So we've restructured the land use element a little bit to have some high level policies about the urban growth areas for on Alaska and Packwood. And that, that'll be goal, UGA four, five, six, and seven. They're very high level. They're very like broad future oriented. And then the, the comp plan is really well, like reliant on the on Alaska and the Packwood subarea plans to kind of keep moving that goal and vision in a more detailed sense. And so that's kind of the whole new housing perspective that we've put in this comprehensive plan. And then the subarea plans also are very helpful in Lewis housing, Lewis County's housing strategy as well, in trying to provide more housing opportunities in urban growth areas, which is some of the revisions we made as well to meet state requirements. So we have a chunk of policies now that are about the first section, UGA one, two, and three. Those are just the general administration of urban growth areas, meeting and addressing growth management act requirements for urban growth areas. And we have another new set of policies about how future visioning and policies and goals and policies for just the county's small town urban growth areas on Alaska and Packwood. And then we still have retained the same master plan resort policies and the major industrial development policies to continue those opportunities moving forward. They will still be a vital part of Lewis County's, you know, comprehensive land use framework is, is implementing master planned resorts and the major industrial developments for economic opportunity, just referencing the IPAT UGA. So there was very minimal changes, like substantive changes to the master plan and industrial developments. We did update them for clarity, making sure they were still addressing requirements. So we did do some like wordsmithing and tweaking, but the intent of them still providing benefits for Lewis County is still there and that will be continued. Then I believe, yeah, my next one is rural. So does anyone have any questions on this slide? It's still pretty high level. So it's okay.
Erin, I might add just a little bit of detail around UGA, the changes around administration. So you guys have said this a few times, and I think this is very true. In the past, the way Lewis County has done UGA expansions is a property owner wants in and we pretty much just let them in. And that is absolutely not the way the growth management wants that to work. It's actually a robust study to determine, do you need it? Is, do you need the land capacity as a jurisdiction? And can you serve it? Can you get sewer and water to it? So we wanted to tighten up some of the language around this. And I'm also going to probably recommend tightening up some administrative language in our countywide planning policies as well. To be really clear that this isn't a, a free for all. We need to make sure that the land that comes into an urban growth area, one is needed for urban growth and two is going to get served. Right? So I just wanted to, to add that in as to why we're making those, those changes around it.
Any questions? All right. Go ahead, Erin.
Thank you. So the next section of land use element is the rural element. And the current rural element has already established goals and policies to preserve rural character as required under the growth management act. Has a whole set of goals and policies for rural economies and how to bolster Lewis County's vital rural economic sectors. Rural services and facilities, because these are in the growth management act, these are different than UGAs and urban growth area services and facilities. So a separate set of policies for those. And then there, in the existing comprehensive plan in the rural element, there are quite quite a laundry list of different goals and policies just for the type one lammers, the type two lammers and the type three lammers. Kind of broken out a little bit more, alluding to the, what zone it's implementing. We, we wanted to be a little more clear and concise to the growth management act. So we did kind of revise, just to be very clear of like type one, type two, type three lammers. And then getting into the changes, the really, the main changes is we, we have the type one lammers. But then we revised those a little bit more to be, open up a little bit more for housing opportunities. As this is going to be critical for Lewis County to provide housing in rural areas. Again, this was, this was still heavily brought up during the engagement. And so we, we adjusted the type one lammers a little bit to have a little more housing options. The type three lammers, they haven't been, we didn't do a ton of like new visioning for them. They're still going in the same direction of the intent of a type three lammer, which is, you know, small scale industrial, commercial. And then limit residential in these areas. And again, that's kind of supporting Lewis County's like rural econ, economic kind of standpoint, trying to maintain that and keep that. And again, that's kind of supporting Lewis County's like rural econo- economic kind of standpoint, trying to maintain that and keep that moving forward into the future. Um, rural development, we did revise these a little bit and added a little more detail to these ones. These were per the recommendations from the county staff, uh, maintaining five acres or greater allow, but still allowing housing. And then, but in a, in a, uh, cluster development style. And again, I don't, this, this planning commission's, uh, uh, more into the development regulations, obviously. So, you know, it, any revisions to align with that policy will come back in the development regulations. This is just the stating, the style upfront, but it's not been fleshed out at this stage yet. So if you're curious about that, that's coming down later. Um, the type two lammers, again, we didn't really revise like the intent of these type two lammer. The existing policies about type two lammers, they are still promoting small scale recreation tourism and, uh, limiting residential uses. Again, keeping with the intent of the Growth Management Act and making sure that those line, but still providing opportunities for Lewis County's recreation and tourism. Uh, moving forward into the future. And then a, a completely new policy is like rural, like open space and parks opportunities. So trying to identify lands for parks, um, and open space in the future. So we are kind of setting that stage for Lewis County to start identifying these moving forward. And kind of expand into how those are going to be, uh, preserved and monitored over time. Any questions? Okay, awesome.
Yeah, I'm not seeing any in the room, but I have a question about allowing for parks. It's a, it's, it's a good thing. I like allowing for parks. But who can afford to develop a park and keep it going? This is just, you know, allowing for it at some future date is the way I understand it. Is that correct?
Yeah, so we have, um, some areas zoned or that we're going to propose, um, open spaces zoning on them. They're all publicly owned lands, um, that that is being proposed for, um, or already exists on. Uh, and so it not, when you see the maps, none of it will surprise you, uh, because they're all places that are currently being used as parks. This is more of an acknowledgement that they exist and they should exist. Um, but living, you know, leaving that, leaving the goals in there and looking forward to, we, we can still add, you know, if the county or the state. Wanted to pick up another piece of property to develop it as a park, we could, we could add this zoning to that as well. That it would just helps hold it, um, from other development.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, the state of the Parks Department right now in the state is very, very, um, they're, they're strapped, okay? And I've been working on another project outside the county and, um, we're just not getting anywhere with, you know, developing another state park. And so, and from what I remember, the county, uh, you know, has had budget problems. And so I just don't see that anytime in the near future. But if it's recognizing existing parks, I totally get it.
Yeah, probably not adding any new parks. Nobody's going to be adding any new parks, uh, soon. But again, when you see the map, what you're going to see is stuff that doesn't surprise you. An example is Skate Creek in Packwood. Is actually zoned R D D twenty. And so it's, it has been surplus by the state in the past. Which means that someone could pick that up and develop it. It's also a really important, uh, park feature in that space. And a really unique natural and cultural resource. Um, and it is a state park. It's passive, right? It has trails and it has a trailhead. It doesn't have anything else. But designating that as not R D D twenty, but park acknowledges that it is a park. Um, so that's an example of where you're going to see this zone that had, had not been used before in a place. Um, to just acknowledge that that is what it is and, and it should stay that way, even if it is just a passive park with trails and a, and a trailhead.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
There's one exception. There's a couple of rotten, uh, picnic tables out there, so.
Yes.
But a park worthy of saving.
Need new facilities. Yes.
Okay. All right. Erin, did you have anything else?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. And I, I'm almost done. So the existing housing element in the comprehensive plan has a whole set of policies around housing supply. Policies for affordability, um, housing preservation, housing coordination. And coordination can be with other cities. It can be with jurisdictions, other departments, programs. Who's going to be helping getting these housing, the housing stock up, um, and then housing development. And, um, we have actually, uh, really the main thing was just updating the policies, the housing policies. To address new state requirements. So, um, we updated also to address comments. We heard, um, from the B O C C and the, uh, I think the planning commission meetings as well for concerns around, uh, S T Rs. And so continuing exploring how that might be regulated in Lewis County in the future. Um, as a lot of other jurisdictions are, are still wondering or exploring. Um, but then really the main thing is, uh, a set of new goals and policies, uh, to kind of start. The state is now requiring not only that you say you can provide enough housing, but that you're providing it to the right people. Who really need it. And it is required now to start analyzing what demographics are getting, what kind of housing. And is that the right, it's now, you know, the responsibility of the county to start looking into those. Um, so we have a new set of policies about starting doing these workflows and starting exploring, um, these opportunities. So again, it's like what housing is currently in floodplain? And how are we going to help these people, uh, either maintain their housing moving forward and preserve it? Or if they have to go somewhere else or what's going to happen? So starting exploring those solutions, it's a very long process. So the policies we, we've implemented so far are just starting the pathway. And then there, the next periodic update, when the county has like moved that further along and actually has some concrete actions or, uh, decisions that have been made. Then they will get like further solidified in policy. Um, and then especially with the new housing requirements. It's, are you providing the right housing choice to the people with the right income associated? So that they're not cost burdened. Um, so we just added, that was already in the policies in the affordability section. But we just re, reworded, refined and make sure it was just very clearly that we have to be looking at all incomes. Um, and again, the, the state really wants us to look at housing, understanding its impacts. Like where multifamily housing is going to be located? Does it have any impacts on environmental justice or health or, um, other considerations like that? So not only just where is the housing going and what is it, but like who is getting it is a little bit more emphasis now. Uh, that the county has to consider.
Okay, before everyone starts getting angry about what you do. Keep in mind that we have to address these things per the new state laws. And so you're going to see policies in there that you may not like, but we do have to put them in there. And so part of what I will ask is, um, you know, a little tempering until you see how we're going to actually implement those. Because most of the cases, what this looks like in implementation is making sure that our zones allow for. A variety of housing types, right? We can't control the market. I can't make the market give me housing. That's affordable at fifty percent A M I. That's subsidized housing. The market will never provide that housing. But we can absolutely remove barriers to where that can happen, making sure that affordable housing projects can happen in places. Making sure the zoning allows for those options. So if there, you know, was a nonprofit that wanted to subsidize and bring housing in. That that can happen. So I just, I know, I know as you're, as you're seeing these things, you're starting that tensing of like, oh my God, it's starting to happen. So just remember that we will still give it the Lewis County treatment as it comes into the regulatory component of it.
No social gineering? Jason?
Yeah, I mean, I, I know that because we've talked about that stuff and I know that's what we do. But, um, we're, we're never going to like how it's talked about. And so, uh, we'll probably still go. Um, you know, because the, the way things are spoken about does matter and it, I think it deserves some pushback and on the reality of it. I know that we do our thing with it and, um, but yeah, we're, we're always going to hate that kind of stuff. So just heads up.
Hey, uh, can I ask a really specific, um, question? I've been trying to pull up the, the land use. Um, table, but I, there's some very specific language about, um. There being a limit to how many houses can be hooked up to one septic tank. And that's, that's something that keeps coming up in my, my attention to housing in Packwood. Where we don't currently have a sewer system and we're quite, we're limited by a duplex being the most dense. That we can, that our county will allow on one septic system, regardless of how much land is available. Um, on a parcel. And I wonder if that is coming up or if. In my mind, it seems like a Lewis County thing and we're not being very flexible there. And I wonder if that's. It part of the conversation right now.
Sure. Um, so it's not, it's not a Lewis County thing. Uh, that particular provision that you're looking at, uh, comes into play in the lammers. Because the current lammard language in the state level says that the lammard should retain. Um, the rural character that they had when you applied the lammard boundary. So for us, that's a nineteen ninety-five, um, timeframe. And, um, so most of our lammers don't have multifamily housing, or if they do, it's very rare. It isn't the character, it's the exception, if it even exists in a lammard at all. Uh, and so letting the character of a lammard change such that you're bringing in row houses. And small cottage apartments is a change to character. And it, that doesn't meet the growth management definitions as they currently stand. Now, many of us, including myself, are actively trying to change the lammard rules. We don't think it's appropriate to have that kind of a constraint on the lammers. Uh, particularly because in rural counties, we need our lammers to be productive from a housing standpoint, right? We need these places that are thirty miles from the closest city to have more housing choices that are affordable. So we want to be able to provide more options. So, um. Fingers crossed, there are two housing bills that are lammard bills. Um, one is Lovelit. The other is Dewar, I believe, sponsored. Uh, both of them are increasing housing allowances in type one lammers. Uh, Angle has one that's up tomorrow that's increasing re- uh, retail options in lammers. And I've also worked on one, but I don't know if it'll get sponsored this year that, um, expands urban service capabilities in lammers. So we're trying really hard, Gretchen, to change exactly what you're talking about, but it has to change at the state level.
Okay. All right. So when, so when if Packwood becomes a U G A.
That goes away?
That goes away regardless of whether we get sewer or not?
So what we can do then, when you, when you get rid of that rural character thing, when it becomes an urban growth area and you just lose the lammard rules. We can be a lot more flexible. Now, the question then becomes, is it useful to use up a lot of property in downtown Packwood? For large drain fields? Probably not, right? That's, that's not a great use of the land and the, the value of that land is much more economically, uh, driven towards actual development. Not, uh, septic reserves. So I think we still want to be really careful about what we allow in that compact area. Where we actually want to see compact, dense development, right? To the point I keep hearing when we have these conversations is we want people to be able to choose to live in those spaces. But those are the spaces that should have high density development, right? Not sprawled out, but in those spaces. Um, so we'll still need to be careful, but I think what it opens up is private step systems, private loss systems. That aren't necessarily, um, owned and operated by a municipality, which is a big change from what's allowed now.
Right, because there's still that, that chance. And there will be those parcels that are never going to be connected to sewer. But still are within that, you know, just on the edge or whatever.
Yes. Yep. Yeah. And so there are options, right? The, the different, uh, there are different large scale septic approaches, like step and loss systems that, um, can work. And I think we, we just open that up if we can get rid of the lammard problem that we're all in.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, I'll move on to my last section. So the environment element. Um, the current element, we, we've made very little changes to the environment element. Again, um, in this, in the essence of trying to just again preserve natural environment. And we made very, like, I, I don't think we made any changes if, if only administrative, like cleanup changes to the natural resource lands element as well. So I'm not, I actually have a slide on it, but you'll see the full, like red lines when we, when we give them out. But, um, again, we were trying to leave these elements as is currently, we got a lot of, you know, in the community feedback. We had a lot of people just, again, just explaining in the rural areas, trying to preserve that character and that rural quality that's already there. People want to see that continued. Um, so then in the environment element, the current, the current element already covered everything that was needed. Under the Growth Management Act, there's been very little change to, um, these, these regulations in the G M A. So it covered critical areas, air quality, the shoreline management stuff, stormwater, um, water quality and quantity. And it had a little bit of hazards. So as you can imagine, with the new, um, climate requirements. We, we just had to go back in and do an additional cleanup, making sure that new, um. Sorry, the new, uh, policies were just also a little bit more leaning towards addressing the new climate requirements. Um, to make sure that when Commerce reviews and looks at the natural environment element, it'll still meet the, uh, the new, uh, the climate stuff as well. It's required to be integrated, especially the environment element, because it's protecting, it's part of the resiliency kind of requirements. That Commerce is expecting us to do. Um, so we, we just updated some protection for aquifers from natural hazards. And then again, we, we added the new wildfire resilience thing. Um, it's, it's quite emphasized from Commerce. That there, there needs to be some wildfire mitigation. And so there, the policies that we currently put in there, there's really, there's one goal and two policies for the wildfire section. Um, and the goal is like reducing impacts and risk posts to property, um, from wildfire. And then really the policies around that would be, you know, uh, using the wooey. Or exploring how that was, would be implement, you know, obviously, uh, in Lewis County. And then the other policy is just utilizing the hazard mitigation plan and community wildfire production participation plan. And kind of implementing those and making sure people are educated on those and aware of those existing plans and kind of mitigating from wildfires. So there's not a whole slew of like wildfire policies being proposed, but it's a little small step to kind of make sure we're addressing those requirements.
Uh, also, if you're interested in the wooey stuff, the wildland urban interface, there is another bill going through the legislature now. Um, that, that would push that. It, there's, there's a lot of problems to still be worked out with that. So I'm really hoping that bill doesn't make it through. Um, because the, the state maps on the wild and urban interface are still not usable at a site by site scale. So, um, we're going to be real careful around that language. We do have to reference it because when it does actually become state law, we will have to implement it. Um, but we're trying to get a lot more answers before that happens. Because right now it would not be implementable as it's currently being brought forward.
That's, um, actually the end of my presentation. Uh, we can definitely take any more final questions on anything that you guys have. Um, we do plan to send out, you know, the draft document, which will have kind of all of the introductory sections in it as well. A first draft of all of that. So you can kind of see the whole picture of the document. Um, but then you, you also will be able to kind of, if you have just really specific policies that you're kind of looking for. Um, there's a, another deliverable that'll be going out that'll just let you see the previous policy and how it changed. Um, and then the reasoning why. And so I, I do want to, as far as the reasoning why, I want to go back to that additional slide. So when we do send these out, just keep in mind that there's going to be a lot of different changes. And they're all, could be in various reasons. And so, you know, there's a large chunk of just the Growth Management Act changes. So you'll see like consistency with the G M A, um, and then consistency with the countywide planning policies, of course. And then the community vision and the county visions are again, like where you might want to look at that and be like, is this. Do we feel like this is adequately representing the community vision? Do we feel like they got this right? We hit the nail on the head, or does that policy still need to be either, uh, you know, massaged a little bit more? And so kind of doing that check for us as you're kind of looking it up. And then administrative cleanup, you'll see a lot of policies. That we were trying to shuffle around and make it easier to implement and clearly line up with the development regulations. So trying to make sure we understand. to make sure we understand how these policies are getting done. So, so there's a lot of, a lot of administrative cleanup that we did for, for this round of periodic updates. So just as you're looking through those, you'll see the little reasoning off to the side, and kind of have a better idea of where that came from. And thank you. That's all I have. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Erin. Any commissioners have any questions at this point for Erin? Okay, seeing none. Mindy, do you have anything?
Unless you guys have more questions for us.
Okay.
Not until we get to go to the order.
That's where I'm going next. Okay. All right. So are there any items from staff for good to the order?
Of course there are.
Point of order. I thought we were doing something with a letter tonight.
We are. That's in my good to the order, too. Let's start with schedule, and then we'll pop into, yeah, the letter transmittal. So we're going to pull up a little schedule here. Excuse me. Go ahead and zoom in for us. Yay, for all of us with our old eyes and my glasses on, because, you know, it's fun. Okay, so on Friday, you guys are going to get a massive amount of stuff. And I just apologize, right now, it's huge. You're going to get the draft comprehensive plan, the new one, and then you're going to get a matrix that has the existing, and the changes, and the why, right? And so this is two ways for you guys to look at it. You can just look at it as a new comp plan, but if you want to see what's changed from the previous, you can look at it. And if you want to know why it's changed, as Erin was saying, you can also then look in this policy matrix to see, is this state law that's making us change it? Is this community vision that's making us change it, or is this just administrative? These are two very, very big pieces of information. You are also on Friday going to get the On Alaska Subbury Plan, and you're going to get a staff report on the Packwood UGA and zoning proposals. Massive, right? That's why I'm giving you a big heads up. It's huge. What I'd like to ask everyone to do is, please, by February 21st, send me questions on the On Alaska Subbury Plan and the Packwood UGA and zoning. So I'll put this in the email that, that Megan or Kylie sends out on the 14th, to remind you. But please get us questions on those, too, because those will be back first on February 25th for workshop. So again, just like we've done in the past, there's just too much to dig into every single detail. So your questions ahead of time will help, because the most, as much as we can answer in writing, so we don't have to discuss it, awesome, then it's in the record and you have your answers in writing. And then we can also hone in on those pieces that you really want to, to talk about together. So those will be the first two. The draft comp plan, we're going to give it to you on Friday, but we're going to give you two weeks before we ask for questions on those, so you get a little bit more time. Again, it's huge amount of work, but we really need you guys to dive deep into that and get us those questions ahead of time, or help us figure out where we want to focus our conversation. March 11th will be that conversation. It is the only workshop where we're going to have that just discussion, and it will be a discussion. So again, I'll try to focus the topics of what we put up on the screen to discuss, based on what you guys are telling us we should talk about. So if you don't have, if I don't get questions from you, or I don't get something from you, I'm assuming you're fine. You don't have, you don't care about what we talk about. If you want to talk about something, or you have questions, please let me know, so we can make sure that we hit those. And those are the ones we'll focus on for that. So that's the next month of work. It is a whole bunch. If you need us to print things, we're happy to print things. If you're happy working just on the screen, I just like screen work. I don't like anything printed. But if you're, if you're somebody who likes printed stuff, that's cool, too. And of course, as always, you can always just call me, too, if you're like, I've forgotten what we're doing. I'm here for those as well. Questions on schedule?
Yeah, when are we going to get the audiobook of that?
I know, right?
Can we?
You want the Cliff Notes version of everything?
No, just something I can listen to in the car.
I know.
Put it on Spotify if you want.
I know, it'd be great. You get to listen to my voice for three hours.
Kind of curious, who would like a paper copy of the comp plan?
Yeah, we, we've been printing stuff. Jeff had asked previously that we make sure and print copies, so we've been printing copies.
Yeah, I think the comp plan, I'd like a copy. I have the shoreline master plan at home, and, you know, keep the big, big documents, so that I can quickly go back and refer to them.
Yep.
So I would appreciate it.
This is still the internal review draft. I mean, still happy to print it for you. But it, we expect, not only are you guys getting it, but we're giving it to all the directors, because they gave us direction, as well as what they wanted to see in it, to help their work programs. So we're going to be asking them to do the same level of review. So we do expect changes to this, based on what you guys ask and talk about, and based on what the other directors ask and talk about as well. So, and then, we move into the hearings, and the community's going to want us to make changes. So it'll change there, too, before it gets to Board of County Commissioners. Yeah. So still a lot of work to come, but, but this is where you guys really get to dive into the details.
Okay.
I reviewed the whole thing. Gilliam interviewed the whole thing. It's a lot to review. Yeah. Yeah.
How many pages, roughly?
Oh, good lord, how many pages?
Two hundred?
Two hundred-ish?
Yeah, okay. I did a hundred-page document on Saturday, in detail, so.
Yeah, I'm not kidding. These are big things.
Okay. Okay, are there any items from the planning commissioners?
Oh, wait, I have one we're going to order. Sorry.
Sorry.
So we also sent out a letter of transmittal for the qualified professional, and Bob and I talked. Because we have so much to do with comprehensive plan, we were wondering if you guys would be comfortable just appointing Bob to work with me to produce a version of the code that includes this non-degree option. So he and I would work together, and then he and I would present that to the Board of County Commissioners, rather than bringing it back here. And I know that's not what we typically do. Typically, we would definitely bring something back before you guys. But I'm really worried about how much we have in front of you. So this was our ask of you guys, if, if you would be comfortable with Bob and I just working on that and bringing it forward to the, to the board. Bob, do you have anything to add to that, from our, based on our conversation?
Yeah, I think I've said, when I went home, and I apologized to you guys last week, because when I started looking at it, I realized what we currently had and what was being proposed, did not leave any openings for a person like me. It didn't leave any openings for entry level. So you will remember that I said, well, let's rewrite it. And I went home, and I started rewriting the next day. And it was, it's hard to write. So it's easier to plagiarize. So that morning, I called Lori and asked something, and Lori sent me one from Pierce County. She had, she had done some research and found one, and I looked at it and said, wow, that, that meets the needs of every wetland scientist I know in Lewis County. It doesn't preclude any of them. Because Pierce County went through the whole exercise. And you get pretty dangerous in Lewis County. I didn't even really want to tell her it was Pierce. I wanted to cut that out the top, and say, here's a great idea, right? Let's use a great idea. Because nobody ever wants to use anything from anybody else's county. But, you know, they've, anyway, so I think I'm happy doing that, but I'm, I totally get it if you guys say, hey, let us read it before you take it to the county.
Yeah, that would be my preference, to just, you know, bring it back to us.
So in order to do that, I just want to be really clear. In order to do that, we're going to have to notice a hearing, we're going to have to take another chunk of your time. You don't have any time in your calendar for quite a while. And so, again, I'm, that's why I'm asking if, you know, you, if you would give Bob and I the opportunity to just move this forward to the Board of County Commissioners, with the advice, knowing what you guys have asked for, knowing that, that Bob would like us to use the Pierce County as an example, and then take that to the board.
Well, could you at least send us a copy of it before you go to the county commissioners?
Of course, of course. And, and it's, you know, and those meetings are completely open, and if you felt that we got it completely wrong.
No, I, I wouldn't think that. But I think, I think, you know, the county, or excuse me, the, the planning commissioners need to have their thumbprint on it, you know, and, and the opportunity
You will.
To look at the final product before it goes up. So that would be my preference. But if, if, if we don't, if, if, if we go to a public hearing, wouldn't we have to go to a public hearing if you and Bob wrote something?
We can take it directly to the Board of County Commissioners. They hold a public hearing.
And then it would just be theirs. So it wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't hold one ourselves and then send it, it would just be theirs.
Exactly. That's what, that's what I'm asking, is if you would let, you know, Bob and I take what you guys, the guidance you have given us, and your letter of transmittal, and, and that we take that forward to them, without coming back here for another public hearing, which, which will take up a big chunk of time again.
No, I, I, that's fine with me. I mean, if, it looks like I'm getting a lot of nodding heads, you know, so I think that's just fine. But I would like to get a copy of it before it goes to the public, or to the county commissioners.
You know, I'm tempted to say, we've been dealing with this crappy policy, just like that open space policy for 15 years, and nobody wants to fix it. And so then we get it fixed, and now I'm realizing that I got to sit there, present it, and have people throw peanuts from here, and the wetland community, and all that. So I think I've just decided, no, why don't we just leave it for a year? And if the county commissioners want it so badly, they can take it up themselves.
This is a staff requested change. So we, we, we would like to.
You can take it up.
We need to get it back to them somehow.
Right.
So I'm not going to sit in front of the county commissioners without saying, the board, the planning commission said, this is what we're putting forward. Not just me, because then it's Bob Russell.
Bob, Frank, am I allowed to talk?
Yeah.
Oh, thank you. Jeez. Is there anybody that really disagrees with having Bob forward this?
I think we've kind of been talking about that. I think.
No, I, I just think that what he's saying is, he doesn't want to personally say, this is my, he wants, he wants our.
And it certainly wouldn't be.
So how, how can we do it, Mindy, where we would?
Right. So this is, you guys, you guys have.
You bring it.
Right. You guys have already told us what you want, right? And so you've done your letter of recommendation, you've made your recommendation. What I'm asking is, rather than bring back the exact code back to you, would you grant myself, working with Bob, who took on, you know, this, to put together the draft code based on your recommendation, take it to the Board of County Commissioners, right? And so, what that's saying is, this is what the planning commission recommended we bring forward to you guys, and that's what we're bringing forward, for your consideration, and they hold a public hearing and make a decision, right? So it's not, it's, this is not a cutting you guys out of the process.
And we get a copy of it before it goes to the county commissioners.
That, that was my request, was.
We can bring a copy to you, but we're not going to have a public hearing. That's what I'm asking. It's not a public hearing.
Just a copy.
All I was asking for, just email us a copy of it, you know, and then, if we want to go to the county commissioners' public hearing, we can, you know, if not.
Sure.
You know.
I guess I would, as a courtesy, if you're, now you're going to mail it. You're going to mail them a copy after we get one done. Is that what I just heard? That's.
Well, we're going to send that to absolutely everybody, because we'll be noticing a hearing, and it'll be available, and we would let everyone here know just the same, that it's available to take a look at. You guys become members of the public, right? So you can take a look at it. And my hope would be that we would be forwarding something that everyone would be comfortable with. I feel like that's very good sense.
If you guys are going to get to look at it, just, I'll query you all beforehand and find out.
Well, you can't do that, because, no, because that's a serial meeting.
Yeah.
Right? So if you guys are really adamant that you want this back in front of you, the only way I see doing it is, we're just going to put it in the development regulations with all the other development regulations that people can testify on, because that is public hearing that's coming back before you, which allows you to see it as part of a public hearing, but is going to be buried with hundreds of other code changes at that point that you're going to be reviewing. So.
I, I think that's the route we need to go. There's professional courtesy to those people that were here. I have a hard time putting something in front of the board. I know they can go talk there, but it's a lot different. It's, I understand that we talked about a lot of things. That's what Mindy's saying. You talked about no college. I talked about yes college. I talked about this. What she sent is not two or three things that are close to what we talked about. It's very detailed. It's, it's good, it's the right thing, but it's not just a sentence added to what we said last time. I don't know, you read it.
And Mindy, you don't want us, like, doing this behind the scenes, right?
You're not allowed to do it behind the scenes. That's illegal.
That's why their finished product, if they just simply email it to us, and then if there's anything major, we can, we can ask. But, you know, proceed, you know, go to the county commissioners. That's my take on it. And, and, but just, you know, give us a copy bef, you know, before that meeting. That's all I'm asking for.
Yeah, I think what, what she's saying, to streamline the process, once you guys have come to some sort of agreement on, on what you think the, the representation should be, and we all get to see it, we all become members of the public, we can write something. If there's a part of it that we don't like, we can show, I mean, we don't even have to be there. So I, I don't think it's, I mean, if I'm understanding this right, it doesn't seem like that big of a deal to, to do it this way.
Yeah.
Unless I'm, unless I'm missing something, but it's just kind of.
I don't think it is, because this is still, you know, this is legislative work. I think if you really wanted it to be back before you, so you can have an open conversation about it, together, in a legal fashion, we can do that. But, but the only way I see doing that where it fits, in our timeline, because it's so busy, is just to bring it back with all the other development regulations.
I, I've heard enough. I'm okay. But here's the thing, if I don't hear from you, you agreed to it, right? That's the way that works. You support what I'm saying when I go there, if this is the way we go. And I don't, and I don't hear from you.
That's why I'm suggesting that we get a copy, just, just for that reason.
So if everybody's okay with that, that's how we'll proceed. When, when you're, you're going to get a copy, is when everybody, the whole public of Lewis County gets a copy. Right. So everybody gets a copy at the same time. And, you know, and you're not allowed to have a, a conversation via email, or, you know, a serial meeting is where Bob calls Jason, and Jason calls Frank, and Frank calls Lori, and they all chain through, you know, or you call each person individually. You can't do that. That's called a serial meeting. So what it means is, hopefully, I, I have full confidence in Bob and I, that we'll put something together that everyone will be comfortable with.
I do, too. And the county commissioners can do what they want, anyway.
They can, and, and it's a public hearing. The reason, I guess the reason why I keep pushing for this is, by the time the development regulations get to the Board of County Commissioners, and all the people who are here get to go testify again, they're going to be lost in a sea of all the rest of the testimony that's coming in on all the other development regulations. And this felt like something that's important, that, you know, if it's standalone at the Board of County Commissioners, that's the only topic they're going to hear about from those people who were in the room. It won't get lost. So I think this is a way to not lose it, to try to do, you know, but to try to streamline it, and get it going forward. So if people.
So there won't be a transmittal, then, like we normally do?
No.
Yeah. Gretchen, did you have any questions or comments on what we've been discussing?
Oh, I, I understand. I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with Mindy and Bob putting something together, and us speaking up if we want to, and our silence is.
Consent?
Take consent. There you go. I'm good with that.
Okay. Anything else for good to the order, Mindy?
April 8th, Packwood, don't forget.
Okay. All right. The next planning commission meeting will be February 25th.
Do we have a good to the order for the people, for us?
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped it. Sorry, inadvertently. Jeff, go first. I won't leave you out.
The, the invisible child is over here somewhere. No, real, real simple. I wanted to follow up on the fire resilience. We have an eight, a, a large piece of acreage, about 10 acres, that is in timber, kind of. And so we called up the DNR, and they sent out a very nice person. It was very congenial, extremely helpful. They will do cost sharing and help us to thin out, although I think I'll be doing most of the work. And it, it's a very positive way to approach this, and, and, you know, have individual people deal with the fires on potential, on their own properties.
Okay, thank you. Roger?
Yeah, I just wanted to throw out there, South Puget Sound Community College is putting together a residential construction training program. It's new this year. Not much detail on when it's going to start. All it says is early. It's new this year, not much detail on when it's going to start, all it says early 2025. Thirteen week program, it's backed by United Way, Olympia Master Builders, Building Industry of Washington, and it's a good 13 week program that's going to teach you all the construction math, carpentry skills, kind of a, a basic apprentice level type residential building program. So just trying to help get the word out there and get interest on it. As far as I know, it's the only program like that in the area. I know Sotia College was wanting to put something together and they just couldn't get the momentum. But South Puget Sound is doing a pretty good job of promoting it and getting a lot of people on board, so.
Great, Roger, thank you. Bob, did you have something?
I did. I, as you remember, I'm working on an ADU at my house and I promised I would learn along the way and give you guys updates. We're three months in and I'm still trying to get approval to use the water that I no longer use for my children because they moved out. And these are details which I think there might be worth it. Eighteen years ago, when you built your house, you didn't have to build it 100 feet from your wellhead. Now it has to be 100 feet from the wellhead. So now when I want to use water, which I've been using and nothing's gone on around my neighborhood for 18 years, three months, and it's still with the county health department to try to tell me whether I can tap into the water line. And I can't get an engineer, the engineer calls every week, that's three months for the water line. Can't get a building permit because they won't give me my money back if I get the building permit and they tell me I can't build the ADU. But I just can't get this guy, it's funny because it's not even her, it's county health or somebody. And the thousands of dollars I've heard already that I'm going to have to spend in order to tap into that water line is just remarkable. There is no cheap housing and these ADUs are not easy.
Jason, did you have anything?
I probably should not add anything to anything.
Yeah, I, I would, I, yeah, I would just, you know, remind you your position here as planning commissioners.
Gretchen?
No.
Looking forward to seeing you out there.
Yeah.
All right. Well, again, I apologize for missing commissioners for good to the order. So the next planning commission meeting will be February 25th and the agenda items will be a workshop on the Onalaska Sub area plan and the Packwood UGA and zoning. Staff, are there any other items for that meeting?
Nope, that's it. It's a lot.
Are there any commissioners who cannot be present at the February 25th meeting? Okay, sounds good. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
So moved and adjourned.